We're running out of time. What still needs to be done at Phase One that you mentioned, Lynn? What are you referring to?
Primarily the restroom facilities that we don't have there. And people are, I mean, I have gotten, I can't even tell you how many complaints about it. I mean, yeah, people do like it, too. I get that. But when you have so many people still out there vocally sharing negativity, and they're still all over next door about it. I mean, I monitor the site. I don't post on the site, but I read a lot of the things that are in there. And there's still a whole lot of negativity.
We're not going to solve that. I mean, that's not going to change until their actual restrooms get done. And people are going to comment, and they're going to comment incorrectly. We know that because it happens every day. And some things we just cannot control. And I feel, as you said, Jaha, you know, we can use our new communications director to help put information out there, correct information, and we can put it out in our weekly newsletters or weekly communication.
I'd just like to make one quick point.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, and with, as Jaha pointed out, with communication, we'll get our message out better. But the restrooms were not built initially because the bids that we got were not fiscally prudent for this city to proceed without having them redesigned. And we did this for the long haul. This is a short-term issue that we, as a council, I think, approached prudently and are addressing at this point. People just need to understand that. It's not a permanent situation. It's a temporary situation. A move for approval.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve the award. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Get them to work. Mitchell?
Thank you.
We will, one of our goals, we'll communicate to them to save as many of those trees as possible.
That's in the landscape plan. The boards are in there.
The next item is a real quick one. Award of contract for Southeast Drilling, who did work before at the site. And we need to finish the two complete water production wells to go along with the Arrow plant that's being bid as we speak.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the award. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Get them to work, Tom. Drill. Unfinished business. Discussion regarding the ban of medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities within the city limits. Gary brought this to the agenda, so we will let him take it.
I brought this to the agenda, and thank you very much. I just want to say that we have discussed this previously, the last time Lynn had brought it forward. I have voted against, always with reluctance, and I want to commend Lynn when she kept the conversation. But I just wasn't ready to go yet because of issues that really didn't have to do with this. But the surrounding communities have been stepping forward. I think it is time for us to proceed with the allowance of a medical marijuana dispensary facility. Just like to point out, just in the paper today, in our state, in 2016, we had 952 deaths due to heroin overdose, 1,390 due to fentanyl, 723 during oxycontin, and 245 during hydro- for hydrocodone. I said that wrong. Hydrocodone. Hydrocodone is a chemical I use to sell. I apologize for that. But I also, as I had stated in a previous message, early on in our discussion last August, that in the previous spring, Scientific America had published a little blurb that where medical marijuana was allowed, that there was indication, but not conclusive at that point, but indication, that deaths due to opiate overdoses decreased. And they were estimated at that time as something greater than 25, than 20 percent. A recent study done by the American Academy of Pain Medicine has finished a study over several states that have approved medical marijuana in the past over a long period of time since 2010. And they have shown that approximately a 25 percent decrease in opiate overdose occurs. And this is because marijuana is often a good substitute for pain management when the opiate is no longer really prudent to continue on in a long-term basis for the individual. That's also not to, there's also been, when they took out those numbers, there was also a 55 percent decrease in deaths from overdose with people that were, opiate overdose related to people that were on prescription drugs. And that would be particularly the, in our state, the 1,100 people or 1,000 people from the oxycodin type of opiates, the prescription drugs that the doctors give for pain management. There is talk now that they want to limit the amount in the state, the length of time a person can receive a prescription. Frequently, when a person does have chronic pain, they get to a certain point, and the doctors no longer relieve that prescription. There is evidence to indicate that these, some of these individuals often go to the street, and they are also requiring, acquiring heroin and fentanyl to self-medicate in those situations when the medical, standard medical procedures are not allowed to afford them that. These are, these are real things. This is also not to play down the other uses for medical marijuana. And I want to point out that medical marijuana usage, and the way it's being proposed in our state, is not just getting some weed, rolling up a joint, and sitting on the corner and having a gay old time. There's a number of constituents of marijuana that have been identified to have medicinal value for various types of maladies: THC, CBD, CBN, and THCV, for example. And you can, I think the point was a boutique. You can actually go to these things, and this can be blended, just as a way a pharmacist would custom compound a medication for a doctor, for that particular individual's need, based on that doctor's recommendation. People that have Crohn's disease, epilepsy, Parkinson's disease, and so forth, in addition to the typical cancer person who has to fight a loss of appetite, nausea, these various constituents can help alleviate and temper that without having the same dangers as opiates. I do understand the federal government lists marijuana as a Schedule I. It's arbitrary from my perspective. There's sufficient evidence, I believe, to show that this is beneficial. We do have a demographic here in Charlotte County, and in Punta Gorda in particular, that could benefit from this. And if somebody were to want to come in and put a dispensary with a controlled substance, remember, this is not, like I said, we're not just going to pick up some weed. And as I had mentioned in one of ours, to Jaha when we were having this discussion before, any one of us can walk out of here and score in 15 minutes and get some weed. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about applied scientific medicine under the supervision of a doctor in a controlled, quality-controlled substance. And for that reason, I think that I would rather, and the politics of the home rule objections that I had seem to have sorted themselves out around surrounding communities. So we're not going to be the Mecca, the only one in the southwest Florida that's going to have it. And that was one of my concerns. There are going to be others. There are in Northport, et cetera. And I think that for accommodating our citizenship, this would be a good time now for us to not wait for the sunset that we have passed.
Nancy?
I happen to agree. I actually went to the Surtara dispensary up in Northport. Very, very professional. You can drive up 41, and you would never know where it is. It's in a strip shopping center, but it's on the side of the building. Extremely professionally done. They're actually distributing, dispensing the products, and they actually steam distill the aromatic compounds out of the plant, and then prepare the products. And you can go online and see what the products are that are offered. And I don't have any problem with it. It wouldn't be a detractor in any part of our community, actually. I was concerned about that initially, which was one of the reasons why I was opposed to it. But after we've studied it, I think that, and saw what this one was like up in Northport, it would, you know, fit right into the community. No one would know. And the people that were in there were people like us. There, this was not a, you know, some kind of a methadone clinic or anything like that at all. So, very well, well done. And I would support.
I would agree with all of that. I am in touch with one of the Northport commissioners who was instrumental in getting it approved in Northport. And she said to me that they have had absolutely no problems with the facility that was opened. In fact, people are very supportive of it. And you're absolutely right. They're very nondescript. You would never know from the street that what's inside that building is what's in there. And they're not going around selling recreational marijuana. They're selling medicinal marijuana that's prescription. And there are a number of people in our community that have asked for it, who voted for it over a year ago. And I understand the home rule situation, but I don't see that changing in this legislature. So I think we owe it to the citizens that voted in favor of it to move forward with it and lift the ban.
I would be in support, but I have a, I would ask that we wait the two weeks and three days until the session's over. I say this for this reason is that marijuana's actually in discussion right now in the legislature. I mean, it took until now, but it's there. And I say this because they're, the, I mean, of course, they have an issue with to have a choice of all or nothing. But for me, even greater than that, there are two issues. One is that they cut the funding for the actual study of it. Even though ideally, there's an idea that there's formulations, there's no framework whatsoever. A doctor knows as much as you do about how much to put in, because there is, there's no science on that. And so Moffitt actually has a center for the study of this, which was supposed to be funded, which they took out of this funding. Two, my worry, and again, I don't oppose having one here, but the politics of it, the reason why cities and counties joined together to ban it was not to deny people access. It was because the politics or the fact that we're trying to have the legislature put pressure on them to change the law, because it's a very bad law. My worry with this law as stands is that it allows one to obtain, but it does, but it still doesn't make it legal to consume. And so it's a very big issue that if someone is in the workplace, and you take this, despite you having a health condition, you are violating the Florida Drug Free Workplace Act, which means you are actually technically an illicit drug user. Secondly, if you're someone who's someone with disabilities, you take this, this will disallow you from being able to be considered a disabled person. And so it's one of those things where I think that we owe it to our citizens, that we give them the very best chance we can, at least let this session end before we do this, only because I have no issue with us having one here, but I find that these are really untenable issues. I think that for someone to have to choose between health and their livelihood is terrible. And I think just, truly, if you have a law in which it's very deceptive, and the public, my thing is that if the public sees in a newspaper, "Ban lifted," the assumption is it is legal to take. And it's not. In Florida, there's no employer or employer protections. An employer, if your employee was to take this, and there was some workplace incident, unlike if someone was on a prescription medicine, there are no protections. You're just, you have employees using illicit drug who's now caused a problem. The same thing, the person, again, themselves. They very easily can lose their employment unless the employee, unless the employer very specifically says that, "I changed this policy." And so I would ask that we move this to the next meeting, only to at least give legislature, at least, I mean, if, they're going to do what they're going to do. If they don't do anything, they'll do anything. We did our best try. But I would say, if we do this now, we are actually breaking from the herd in terms of our fellow cities and counties that have concern about the actual larger legal issues.
Gary?
With all due respect, two weeks, week and a half, I think it's time to go forward. In some respects, I wish I would have gone forward sooner. But like I said, I wanted to see what the surrounding communities have done. It's going to be available if somebody, if a cancer patient needs help with an appetite and pain management, if a person with severe chronic pain and is wanting to reduce their opiate use or will soon not have their opiate use, these things are available. I understand the point that you're making, but that's only one piece of the total pie of the patients that would benefit from this, even though it is illicit. And I think that it's still time, I think it's time to go forward. Despite, unfortunately, despite all this craziness that's going on in Tallahassee, I am on record saying that I do agree that it's a bad law. I don't like what they're doing up there.
Agreed.
Us home rule people feel offended by that. I am still offended by that. But I think it's time for me, for personally, to say, "I need to chew a little crow, and I just need to do what's, go forward, bet's, bet's what was best, and go along with Lynn and Nancy and what they proposed here just recently," rather than to wait till...
Yeah, and our hesitation, I think, for the most part, has never been about the medical use. It's been about cramming it down our throat, the number, the placement. You have to treat them like a pharmacy. I mean, knowing, like, the point that you brought up before, Nancy, that it could go, you know, behind the torch, that's a real possibility even right now, today.
Yes.
I mean, the number does concern me, but I guess, you know, what's been told to us is that the free market will hash that out. And so, I mean, as much as I think they will do something, I don't think they will, because this new situation with the gun, the gun situation with the students there today, they're, all their attention is going to be taken up, which is a good distraction for us, because I think they're going to forget a lot of this nonsense that was going on. But I don't know, I don't feel confident that they are going to do anything, which, because what we were told through the league is that the state is now waiting for the feds to change their tune on their take on marijuana. So until the feds do anything, the state's not going to do anything. So then that trickles down to us, and what are we going to do? So, Lynn?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Howard, but at this point, if we lift the ban, then staff has got to draft an ordinance that has to come back to us anyway, correct?
No, it's just, no, state law.
It's ordinance.
There's no ordinance. Well, we have an ordinance in place that bans it.
Correct.
It sunsets in August, so we're just, we're just, on sunset, and saying, "Let's just go forward now."
Our paralegal's at the door, ready to get charged in.
I just want to be clear, Howard, we're doing this.
Good morning, Kell Finkel, for the record, paralegal. We do have an ordinance that makes it sunset till August. So I think if you lifted it, we would have to repeal that ordinance.
That's my belief as well.
So we repeal that ordinance. We don't have to write a new one.
Have to repeal the ordinance.
We need to repeal that ordinance. Whether or not, as part of that repeal, we need to put any provisions in there regarding where it might be permissible. I'll have to take a look. It's been, I'll have to take a look. But we definitely have nothing else.
I think we've had that session already. We don't have that control.
If we, if nothing else, we'll need to repeal the existing ordinance, which created the prohibition.
I'd like to move that we repeal the ordinance.
Well, well, the motion would be to direct staff to come back with an ordinance for your consideration that repeals the moratorium.
So that's going to take another two and a half weeks, anyway. So we're all happy. So I would like to move that we direct staff.
Second. I want to second it.
I want to, I want to, I want to move that we direct staff to draft an appropriate ordinance to repeal our, our ban sunset clause.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to move this forward, for ordinance to come back at the next meeting? Is that what your direction is?
Yes.
Okay.
To repeal it.
Yep.
All good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And we all got what we wanted. Thank you, guys.
I'll do a standing ovation for ourselves.
I have a question for you, because reading in the paper, so, just clarify for us. You are, you're not a dispensary, though. You're just the clinic where the people come to get the card, correct?
For the record, this is my first council meeting. I want to apologize for jumping the gun there. But yes, we are a medical facility, just like any other doctor's office, okay? We do the recommendation portion for the patients. We simply educate the patients on what they need for their specific disease, debilitating condition, from PTSD to cancer, okay? Epilepsy to MS to ALS. We're seeing rare cases of things that I've never seen before. I've been in the medical field almost 10 years. Pain management, everything you said about the opiates, the fentanyl, the everything, that's all really happening. It's been happening for a very long time. I've lost friends, family, patients to this garbage medication. Yes, it can help the patients, you know, short-term, but long-term, it'll kill them quicker. So, to answer your question, yes, we are the doctor portion of it. We get the patient through this very cumbersome system of Tallahassee, because they, again, have made it extremely difficult for patients, losing paperwork. I've been waiting for a phone call, which I received yesterday for about two and a half weeks, for a manager at the MMUR in what we thought was Tampa, which is now Jacksonville. So their call center's in Jacksonville, and where they process the apps are in Tampa. But all of the stuff that happens and who's in charge of it is in Tallahassee. So, to try and get ahold of somebody, nearly impossible, even for the patients. You know, they're calling me 10 times a week, "Hey, what's going on? I can't get ahold of anybody." Well, guess what? Me, too. So I'm going above and beyond for each and every single one of these patients to get the medicine. So if we could get that dispensary closer to them, that could take a little bit off their plague, and for their family members as well.
So then, after they're done with you, and they get their card, then they go to the dispensary?
Well, they have to wait for approval from the state, which takes a very long time. It could take two weeks. I've seen patients get it in two weeks to about eight, nine weeks. I'm still having patients from December the 30th waiting for their cards, because they got lost in the shuffle, which is not acceptable. You know, the patients that are actually dying, stage four liver failure, stage four kidney failure, everything, you know, are calling me saying, "Hey, I'm dying. Like, can you, can you help me?" I actually had a patient pass away before she could use her medicine, because the state was dragging their feet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next, we are into the establishment of an airport protection overlay district.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official, for the record. Before you, it's in a draft ordinance form. Just because it was a little more simple to do that, we, it's required by Florida State statute, since we have some properties that fall within the airport protection overlay area. The purple area is the entire total airport protection overlay, and the red hashed areas are in the city limits. There are several, the conical zone, there's a couple different zones out there. Again, the purple, or the purple area is the entire area. The conical zone will have height limits, which are well above what we allow anyway, 150 feet above the airport height at the inner boundary to 350 feet at the airport height at the outer boundary.
What, before you move on, what's the, the outer boundary is the circle, the big circle?
Outer boundary is the circle. The long area that you see there is the air, the runway protection zone and approach zone.
Which, what was that?
The long portion of the purple that comes out, going out toward the harbor?
Oh, yeah. The one that's at the bottom?
At the bottom.
That's the approach?
That's the approach, and the runway, part of the runway protection and the air, and the approach zone.
That height is limited to what, in the?
Well, that's, this, in the conical zone is, is what is in the highlighted area of the main purple, the big round area.
Okay.
The circle. So your height limitations are going to be 150 to 350, depending on where, interior of the airport, out.
Okay, okay.
The horizontal zone, the maximum height is going to be 150 feet, which is in the red hash area. And then, in the approach zone, the heights are limited to 200 feet, out to 1,000 feet. There is a mathematical, computational equation that you use, depending on the height where it is, how many feet out, and how wide the horizontal area goes. We're just falling in line with Charlotte County and the state statutes. This ordinance is mirrored off of Charlotte County. So, here to answer.
You're basically taking what Charlotte County wrote and applying it to the areas that fall within the city limits.
Correct. That is correct. And the only thing we would limit residential density will be limited in this area to what is existing now. They could not transfer density units to that area. They could transfer from it. It could be a sending site, not a receiving site, because you don't want high density in the approach zone.
So that's all burnt store meadows?
Some seminal lakes.
Mm-hmm. We're not taking density away. We're limiting it to what it already is on-site.
Well, I know those conversations are starting about density transfers, I've heard. So that's interesting. So do you have any questions or comments?
The only comments, question, I think you've answered it, is I've had concern expressed about ham radio antennas, but I think this answers the, you've answered that, that it's, that would be okay, because the height here is, they're not as tall as what's allowed. The other concern that I had, as I read through all of this, was, is, will all of the processes for someone who wants to build a home or start a business within this area remain the same that are in the city limits? Or is now FDOT and the FAA going to have, insert themselves into the approval process?
It's going to depend exactly on what they're proposing and where they're proposing it, because there are some limitations, like to make sure that there's no hazard areas where it's creating with a stormwater retention pond, where you have excess number of wildlife birds and things that could be in that approach zone. But that's something, I believe, that can be mitigated pretty easily through this.
That's something, though, that we can manage ourselves, so that it, what I'm concerned about is more red tape.
I can look into that a little deeper and get back with you on that.
I mean, since this is my district, and most of this impacts.
This is still kind of new.
Exactly. You know, although I, some of it is on the east side, which would be in Jaha's area, district. I'm just concerned about more red tape, or some resident who buys a property and then wants to build a home, and they're in the process, and all of a sudden, then they discover there's something that the FAA or FDOT, and I just...
You're bringing up a good point.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know...
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. To address some of that concern, within the context of building heights, within the context of our existing zoning code, there's very limited pieces of the puzzle that this would affect, because our zoning code height limits are significantly lower than these totals.
Yes.
In regards to stormwater management areas, what they're really talking about is wet ponds.
Yes.
And at the scale of development that we have within the approach zone, within the current city limits, you're not going to be creating stormwater management wet ponds, because the lot structures are so small. You need at least an acre to have a stormwater management wet pond, and most of the lots are smaller than an acre. So you wouldn't have that scale of development. This is, that one stormwater management...
Not really true. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the acreage is, but, you know, we approved the construction, the conversion of the old Wama, which became Muscle Car City, into a storage facility. And they've just expanded their retention pond, and it is a wet retention pond.
Correct.
And it's within this purple circle.
It's within the purple circle, but the stormwater management limitations are only related to the approach zone, which is the actual flight path in. So it's this red hatched area. So the only affected commercial properties would potentially be those along 41, including the current site of Muscle Car City. So in terms of wet stormwater management ponds, they're expensive to produce, to maintain, in comparison to dry ponds. So unless it's a special feature of like a large community, or you have wetlands that you're destroying, so you need someplace to put the water, it's not typical that those are, you know, critical to a development.
Yeah. I just, I'm just expressing that, and I hear what you're saying about the pond. I just want to keep this, as, the city of Punta Gorda is, has a reputation of being easy to do business with, and we really do a great job of permitting, and we're quick, as opposed to our, the county. Although I, you know, understand they're improving, but, and I just don't want to see us get bogged down somehow with some red tape.
Yeah.
And that's where, as I read through this, I just started to see where the direction could be.
Right.
And knowing that the FAA is, can really do about what they want, it concerned me.
Yeah. Well, certainly, we as staff have had concerns, but of course, we're complying with state statute. This is something that we have to do.
That's the point. We may not have any choice in the matter, correct?
Correct.
But with what we're doing with this, my question would be, in dealing with the county, are you dealing with the county up to date, or are you dealing with what, my question is, like, the county right now realizes that its particular rules are not serving it well. And to the point... And to the point where they just changed the rule to allow, let's say, extended stay hotel. I mean, some of the rules against residential and all this, ultimately, they've, they've made it so that the airport industrial park has not been able to develop. And my, my only concern is that if we don't do this in concert with, I guess, a longer term approach, that not, not only the future of our area, but any area that we may be future annexed into the city that's in this zone may be problematic. And I just think that in dealing with the county aspect, I think we need to deal with them more on a talking level than on a, looking at their statutes. Because I know as of this moment, they're, they're desiring to make more changes in regard to their own airport protection zone because it's not served them the way that the, this is written.
And further record, Lisa Hannan, again, we did meet with the operations manager, Ron Ridenhour, at the airport. We went over this, I think it's about six months ago, six, eight months ago, we went over it. This, this is mirrored after regular state statute as well as Charlotte County. So these are the FAA and FDOT regulations, not just Charlotte County's regulations. This, we're just trying to incorporate in what, where the city falls, where our, where our city limits fall and where it can impact in the, in the overlay. We're not, we're not trying to quench any development or anything like that.
My question more is that they, and I don't know where, within their code, they've, they were able to do this. But like, I know as of the last month, they had to make changes because they desire to have, they say extended stay hotel by the airport, which wasn't permissible under, let's say, the code six months ago. And I, I'm going to, I guess, make sure that our code matches the, the recent adjustments that the counties made so that we're not, so that we're not more restrictive than the county.
Right. And that's not our intent with this ordinance, it's just to fall in line with the FAA and the FDOT and the state statutes, not to be any more restrictive on what is permitted.
Lisa, further to Jahas' point, how is this going to affect any potential development at the Loop or the Tucker's Grade area that, that is all forecasted to be up and coming?
Again, we're, we're, I'll, I'll.
Because I mean, Tucker's Grade, we eventually probably will want that property annexed at some point. And if, if it's current zoning has residential density or whatever it may be zoned for, they are going to probably want to change that because it's going to be a mixed use development.
Right. So to address Tucker's Grade, Tucker's Grade is outside of the airport protection overlay area, so it's, it's a mute point for that interchange. As far as development potential within the, the Loop area or the Jones Loop Road interchange area, within the context of our existing code, these regulations essentially would have no effect because under our existing codes, you can go to about sixty feet in height through a planned development process. So.
But what about the level of density? Because the, I mean, if they, if they build what they originally said they were going to build at the Loop, is that going to affect?
The, the density at the, at the Loop property is limited by virtue of the airport, of the, in a local agreement between the city and the county. So if the Loop property, they're, they're not within the approach zone. Their entire property is outside of the approach zone, so the density limits would not take effect. I'm trying to get a cursor.
When you say the approach zone, is that the, is that the runway protection zone?
Uh, yes, yes. This, this, uh, this red hatch on the purple, that's where the, the density limitations would occur. So if the developer of this property wanted to, to buy density, transfer to, uh, density units from someplace else in the county or the city and transfer them to that property, they could do so. They could do so under this proposed ordinance because they do not fall within this approach zone.
Luckily, part of it's a state park.
Yes, a significant portion of the approach zone is a state parkland, so.
Yeah.
There's no effect on development there.
I mean, if it starts bubbling up to something, we're going to have to take it up with the state.
Right, right. And I realize we, we can't control the state statute, I'm just bringing an issue up just to be aware. Because I just am concerned that, you know, something could happen and I just am expressing that I, I, I don't want to see something happen where we start to layer on red tape. So when that starts, if that should start to occur, that will be something we need to really.
Well, to the flip side of this, we have to have this in our code so that people are aware that these provisions exist. So this is a draft ordinance, so if anybody doesn't have any changes, then do we need to vote? Or is there just consensus to move forward? Is that appro, is that okay?
Yeah, consensus is fine.
So is everybody okay with the draft and move it forward to public hearings?
Yes.
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 Okay, next, we have discussion regarding the establishment of an interchange commercial area zoning district.
Okay, after the, all these went through all the public hearings for the variances, staff was directed to draft a new zoning classification for areas out at the interstate, naming it inter, interchange commercial. The sort of shaded area right now, that is the current city limits for that area. This is potential to change this for, to the interchange commercial zoning district. And then this would be the future annexation of what would, would or could fall under the interchange commercial zoning district. And this would be to offer this option. We, currently, the Loop has come in under the highway commercial zoning district. We can't change their zoning without them requesting a zoning change. Even the upcoming annexation and comp plan and rezoning. So, other than that, it's a little bit of a hybrid between the highway commercial and the old commercial general from the code prior to two thousand and five. And we're up for any changes, re, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, why could we not apply this to the forty-one corridor from Akia Star to the Suite Bay Shopping Center?
I'm going to let Mitchell answer that one.
Because there's a lot of vacant properties there, some are already annexed in and some are not.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design, in the initial discussions of this zoning classification, the, the critical concern was of the interchange area and Jones Loop Road. So that, that is what staff has provided for here. As there is currently no area in the city that is this zoning classification and individual property owners would have to consent or come in for rezoning, you could end up with a situation if, if we allowed this to be present on those other sites, that you would end up with a spot zoning scenario. Here, we have the good fortune of having a, one single large parcel owner for a substantial portion of this property, so that would not be a spot zone.
But it could be done?
If city council wants to change the rules on some portion of US forty-one, certainly, we could look at that.
Okay, this is, this is going to make it easier for commercial development, correct?
This is going to make it easier for commercial development that is oriented towards highway traffic.
Right. And that's why I think forty-one should also be included.
So, so the question is, pardon me, but I think I'm, want to piggyback on this. If forty, if these parcels that Lynn is referring to would be amenable to annexing into us, if we were to proactively do something similar to what we're doing here, that might encourage development of that area with the intent for them to annex into Punta Gorda.
Right. And, and I, I guess my one concern is, you know, the new mobile station with the seven eleven, I think it looks absolutely horrible. We, all we're looking at is the back of a building on forty-one and it looks absolutely horrible. Had this been applicable to them, they could have built it so that it faced the street and looked like all the rest of the businesses that are already in that corridor. I just think that we, to be proactive, I think, in theory, I think that this, this might be something that could help us encourage commercial development and further businesses to annex into the city. And I would be in favor of that. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying there, but all this, my take on this slide is it's just an example. When somebody annexes in, or if somebody wants to choose to re, rezone, they could come to the city and say, I'd like to rezone. I mean, so when somebody annexes, they work with staff to pick what is the most appropriate zoning classification. We just don't have that classification at this point in time. I understand that. So, I, I would agree that in some cases, this would be much better. I think, I think we should encourage commercial development in the forty-one corridor. That's my, that's my whole point. Oh, absolutely, totally agree. And that's where we want the commercial development to come in. Because there's, we're running out of space downtown, so.
Right.
I just think that that's something we could do to be more proactive.
If I understand basically what Lynn's saying, is she's just saying that maybe proactively we should put a template out there for future consideration so that.
That's what this is.
Yeah, that's my point. And she's, and she's just, and I think that's a great idea. That maybe that's what we should be doing is, if we get a consensus, to direct staff to come up with an idea for the, for the forty-one quarter. Is, is that what we're talking about?
So we could do that, too.
I have some questions about the language.
I also have a question.
Okay, so I'm going to start the language conversation. I see a, a conflict with, under C, uses permitted with conditions, automotive boat, manufactured home sales and/or service excluding tandem wheel or dual wheel vehicles usually associated with commercial or industrial uses and associated services, provided that all servicing or repair is done within a completely enclosed building. But if they're selling, then they can have the product out on the lot. But then if you go down under special exception, the sales and display in other than completely enclosed buildings of any merchandise, but that saves it, otherwise allowed as permitted as use, that would save that? They would be allowed to have, like, I'm thinking of the trailer place right now that's on the corner. Obviously, they have stuff outside, but they have an enclosed building as well. So would they, they would be able to work with this if they decided that they wanted to come in?
Correct.
Okay. What is a sports marina? Sports marinas?
Yes. That is a good question. It's probably language pulled from the old code directly and needs to be removed because marinas covers any type of marina.
Okay. And then what about motor bus terminal? I mean, do we really want? I don't know. Do we really want a bus station? Is that something we really want?
Yeah. That, that's up to council. It does actually include a provision, that provision would allow like pilot to annex in because they currently operate as, as the pickup point for Greyhound and other bus lines.
Okay, okay, so that makes sense. And I was thinking too, if it's motor bus terminal, would that, say, say the county did put together some kind of fixed route thing that would allow them to do something as well?
Correct.
Okay. So sports marinas, you would just, it would be included under marinas?
Correct.
I have one I would like to see us remove.
Wait, wait till I'm done and then you can go. That might have been. Okay, go ahead.
Item under F. Item eight, adult establishments.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to remove that. I don't think we need to bada bing or whatever in this area. I, I've gotten enough emails complaining about the vasectomy billboard out on I seventy-five, so. If.
Wow. No comment.
We do, we do have other places in the city where an adult establishment may be permissible. Is that not correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But I guess this would be under special exception, so we would. They could put it inside the medical marijuana building.
The point is that we're not, we're not allowed to exclude them entirely from the city.
Right, from the city.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
And we want to direct them to those areas where they may be least impactful to residents. So if this is intended to be a very intensive commercial area, this might be a better place than where we might have them otherwise, so.
They are popular by the interstate, I do have to say.
I get it, but.
Again, this is just a draft that we want to take to the planning commission, so do you want to leave the words in or not?
I guess take it to the, I'd be okay taking it to plan.
I'd like the planning commission's reaction to that.
You know, we can always, we can always take it out through the, the hearing process, but maybe we might want to leave it in for discussion purposes anyway.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that's all we're trying to do here is to, what do you want us to do with US forty-one?
I'd like to see it included, but. Well, but we can't rezone, can't, you're talking about actually rezoning. This is just, all this is, is just to establish the classification. That's all we're talking about today. We're not talking about, I mean, I get what you're saying and totally agree with you, but we're not, the conversation isn't about rezoning something that's already existing. It's just establishing this.
Option.
Yeah, I mean, if I understand what you're saying, we have to establish the classification first.
Right.
There are areas that we could rezone at the same time as establishing the classification, whether the property owner wanted us to do that or not. But before we do any of that, we have to have the classification in place. So that's what we're discussing today.
We know that this classification works better for potential development of the former Loop. We know that. That's the impetus behind some of this.
So if Aldi would have waited, then they would have just.
They would have been falling into this, wouldn't have had to have a variance.
Right, right.
Fine. That's how this starts.
Looks good. Take it to the planning commission.
Yep, agreed.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have discussion regarding an amendment to the special exception termination timeline.
Yes, there was a, a discussion not that long ago where it was brought out that our code has a two-year limitation on special exceptions, meaning that they have to be in use within the two years from the date of approval, otherwise it expires. And, and it was brought to your attention that some of the projects that require special exceptions have to go through a series of, of governmental approvals that may end up taking longer than the two years that we would allow. And the city council understood the reasonableness of having the opportunity to extend that deadline, but unfortunately, under our code, there was no opportunity to do that. So the suggestion was made to consider an ordinance that would allow for an extension of the original two-year limitation based on factors that you would consider, demonstration of good faith efforts to obtain the approvals, et cetera. And the suggestion would be that in addition to the two years that they already get, that they could get up to an additional three years for a maximum of five years from the date of approval, which is more or less consistent with codes that, that I'm, that I'm familiar with. So this is just at the moment, an ordinance for your consideration for, to us to have, go forward with in terms of ultimately bringing it back for your public hearing approval.
Who is going to be the judge of the good faith?
You would.
We would? Because they would have to come back for these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because obviously, with our, our situation with the bird cut, dealing with Army Corps, I mean, we've seen how that process goes like this.
Right.
So we would be the judge of that. They would have to show in their application for the extension.
Correct.
The work that they've been doing.
Correct.
Okay. Lynn?
Just one quick thing about it. When we talked about it, we talked about a total of five years. The two years that the approval process is, is in existence and then they would have up to three additional years for a total of five years. And I read this to say that this could be a total of seven years.
No, it's because it's not to exceed a total of five years from the initial special exception approval date.
Okay, all right, that's fine. There's a typo, I believe, in that one. It's a sentence that, "City council shall have in its sole discretion the authority to grant addition time." Do you mean addition or additional?
It obviously should be additional, thank you.
Okay.
So can this go to planning?
This can go to planning.
Yes.
Planning's got a lot of work to do. We are going to take a quick break.
Good idea.
Ten forty-four, ten forty-six, we'll come back at, oh, nine minutes, ten fifty-five. Does that sound doable?